Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, December 12th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planner, city engineer are present? Councilmember Gabe Gady is absent. Councilmember Darkemwell is present. Councilmember Dahl is present and Councilmember Morris is present along with our assistant city administrator and our city administrator. At this time, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under one. In the book of the Constitution of Justice.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Okay. We will close the open forum. And then move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Motion would be in order then?
Madam Mayor. I'm going to approve the agenda's written.
A second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item three is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Brittany.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as written.
A second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one. It is our fee schedule. I will turn this over to Audra, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice has been posted for the ordinance.
Okay, did we receive any comments?
We have not received any comments.
All right, then Daniel will be doing the presentation now that we know that everything is okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
This is an annual review that city staff initiates to review the fees, charges and service fees that the city requires as part of Title III, Chapter one of the city code. The intent of this is to make sure that the fees collected by the city are adequately covering costs intended to cover those services provided or as a cash flow means. I'm just going to quickly summarize kind of the the major changes through the fee schedule. Most of these are not changed from year to year, but a number of them are reviewed annually and updated typically on an ongoing annual basis. So first is utility fees. These are for funding construction of the city sewer and water utilities as well as stormwater improvements within the three watershed districts the city has established. The intent is that these fees pay for the services delivered by those using the systems, not through general property taxes. So these are fees in lieu of an area assessment or an area charge typically related to development. Means is to establish an equitable way of funding these improvements based on the extent of services delivered. So a single family home does not pay the same fee that a restaurant would pay, that an industrial warehouse would pay. It's all based on the either the area developed or the amount of water or sewer usage anticipated by the proposed development. Availability charges are the first form of utility fees. Those are for the trunk water distribution and sewer collection systems. Those are paid at final plat approval based on the initial subdivision of the property. And then connection charges are for the operational elements of the utility system. So water towers or wastewater treatment facilities, those are paid at building permits and those are actually based not on the area developed, but on the actual water estimated water usage. Stormwater impact fees are also included to provide for improvements to handle stormwater management through development. That's on an acreage basis within the three watersheds established for 2023. Cities proposing to increase these fees by 5.86%. That's based on an engineering news record, construction cost index that looks at inflation for civil engineering type construction and improvements so that it's distinct from the consumer price index. It's also worth noting that the city councils authorized utility rate study that will further look at the sewer and water related fees later this year going into the 2024 schedule. Park dedication is another development related fee imposed by the city. This is for dedication of the city's park system, state that you allows the city can require dedication of land or payment of a cash fee in lieu of land dedication intended to offset the impact of new development to the city's park system. There needs to be a connection between the impact of the proposed development, either in the land dedicated to the city or the fee charged. And that is then paid at the time of final plat approval when the development is entitled. Residential development, the percentage of land is based on density ranges from 12% up to 17% of the land. And then we set a cash fee based on land value. So looking back several years, we had a praise land values for areas within the sanitary sewer districts that weren't developed yet. So they were in a raw state as the basis for that. And then we've changed that value going forward based on the assessors increase in land value each year. So they're estimating a 5% increase for this year. For commercial and industrial development, these fees were initially established back in 2003. Although the city did drop the industrial park dedication fee in 2017 as an economic development incentive. The land requirement is 10% of the the land being subdivided or cash fee in lieu of land based on 10% of the valuation of the property. Again, that's back from 2003 when there were appraisals done for the Truck Highway 101 project. For 2023, again, increasing the residential by 5% for commercial and industrial would be set the the fee at basically 5% of the land value that we're looking at comparable sales both on Queens Avenue and Cadler Avenue for industrial development. And in the County Road 39, County Road 42 area for commercial development. We also did compare those park dedication fees to those cities surrounding us. You can't use that as the basis to justify the fees that the city has, but they are irrelevant comparison, especially when it pertains to commercial and industrial development so that you understand you're not setting yourself up at a competitive disadvantage in terms of the total fees required by the city for new development. The city also has established a pass through fee structure for processing development applications. The intent being that the benefiting landowner and or developer are paying the costs incurred by the city to consider these applications, whether it be for the city fee portion, which covers internal staff and capital costs plus the costs incurred for publishing public hearing notices, recording documents, salaries for the council and planning commission, et cetera. And then also escrows to cover the costs of the city's current consultants in the form of our office, the city engineer or city engineer. There are also times when an outside consultant may be brought in and developers responsible for covering those costs as well. In terms of the fees for 2023, we're not proposing any change for the the fee paid to the city directly. But we are suggesting that the escrow amounts be increased for commercial and industrial and residential subdivisions. The last couple of years, we've had to deal less with some smaller operating types developers that require a little more attention throughout the development process. So the costs have been higher than they have been in the past. The intent of raising that fee isn't necessarily to burden them, but it actually serves to reduce the amount of work required by the finance department to track down and receive payment for these. The escrows are set up so that if the amount of work done is less than the escrow, that balance is refunded to the developer. If it's over the escrow, then they're invoiced and need to pay through the finance department. So we're trying to facilitate this process for the finance department and expedite the reviews. The city also includes on the fee schedule, a list of charges for city services, including labor, equipment and goods or services that are provided. Really, the purpose of this isn't to offer the opportunity for someone to come rent a front end loader from City Hall, although the deputy clerk might like that idea. But the intent really is to look at when you're trying to assign values to the use of city facilities and services either for grants. If there's a disaster and you're seeking reimbursement for costs incurred. If there's an abatement where the city has to go out and correct a condition, the property owner is responsible. Or other times, if there's someone requesting data from the city, the city can recoup its costs for that as well. So the only change for the 2023 fee schedule is to update the equipment list based on rates established by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So in terms of council action this evening, because we are proposing changes to the zoning and subdivision related fees, charges and expenses, a public hearing is required to be held. But city staff has outlined all of the proposed changes in ordinance 2022-17 for your consideration. We do recommend approval and publication in summary form. If approved by the council, these changes would be effective January 1st for the full year next year. And then again emphasizing that the city is intending to undertake a rate utility rate study to further examine this in preparation for the 2024 schedule.
Thank you, Dan. At this time, I will open the public hearing. This is where you can come to the podium, state your name and address. And we will take any comments in regards to the 2023 fee schedule. Any comments? I'll ask one more time. Are there any comments? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing, bring it back up to council for any questions or a motion inside them. Tom?
Madam Mayor, just a couple of questions. Dan, in the development applications, we changed the variance CUP and IUP from 3,000 of 5,000 for escrow and all others. And just in the IUP, the escrow. The reason for that was I mean, that was a bigger, one of the bigger changes.
Yep. Madam Mayor, again, that's for non, you know, non resident applying for one of those applications. And we again have been seeing increased costs in administering these development applications through the process all the way. And part of that is due to the changes we also made to the process where everything needs to be completely finalized before it comes to the council. So we're seeing more of those costs brought forward before it comes to council rather than trailing after the project as well. So this will again benefit the finance department and the amount of work that they need to do to administer these applications.
And just to be clear, under the development application for variance, that doesn't affect current residents.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, the only other question I had is I see that the park land fee in lieu of land dedication, we kind of took where industrial, commercial use be together and separated out to industrial being less.
Mayor.
So since 2017, the city has not charged an industrial rate. City staff felt it was appropriate to do so now that industrial is more established within the city. And we're also seeing areas where we're planning to have park improvements kind of go through, not in necessarily in the form of active parks, but greenway corridors. Having these funds acquired through the subdivision process will help pay for those in the future.
Anything else, Tom?
Nope, that's okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Jeff.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-17, amending the city code regarding the 2023 fee schedule and approve publication in summary form.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Was there any discussion? All those in favor saying that by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is under engineering 5.1 Atsigo Creek hydraulic study.
Thank you, Mayor. This is brought back from last week. And we, I didn't do a very good job of explaining it to the council, so I'm here explaining to you again today. Stormwater impact fee for Atsigo Creek is what's paying for the work that's being completed, including this engineering report. Atsigo Creek is a DNR waterway. And any work within it requires or a crossing. Sorry. Requires permit from the DNR. So when we met with them quite some time ago, they required, because there's a new FEMA flood plane there, they required that we show no stage increase through any of the culverts that we are intending to put in or a culvert that was already in place subsequent to filling that would be required by the development. So like I said, that this is all development fees for the creek fund. Every time a development comes in, the city collects it. Right now it's $3,985 per net acre, which means anything that's not wetland. They pay $3,985 per acre. So the fund itself is up to a little over $2 million. And it's going to go through where we're sitting at with with our planned improvement that goes through Prairie Point, one of the developments on the west side. So the yellow line is the location of where the Atsigo Creek will be realigned. And that's at the request of the DNR. The switchbacks that are meandering a little too hard cause for bank erosion. So they wanted those smoothed out and that is what we are attempting to do here. It leaves some oxbow oxbow areas that the DNR is liking to leave. The next screen will show some of the plan and profile views of them. And you can see where we're cutting through the new ditch bottom profile line matches very close to where the the creek is. Where we're having to cut through to make a more mild curves. That's where you see those deeper areas where we're cutting. And that earthwork will be used to fill in for the crossing of Marquette Avenue, which is on the next screen. You can see where Marquette's crossing. We have two culverts that have been determined by AE2S and what the sizes they need to be so that we don't have that stage increase. A 60 inch and a 72 inch. The 72 inch is actually one foot into the creek bed. And that's again, per the DNR, they want the bottom of the culvert to have a more natural surface for whatever animals are crossing through it or or the fish that are flowing through it or swimming through it. Next screen. Oh, okay. So let's continuing on downstream and it gets to the point where we're going into the large wetland. Which we call the section 30 wetland, but it's it's within Prairie Point and we will, at that point, this project would be over. It's about three eighths of a mile of creek cleaning. So again, Atsigo Creek is designated public waters by the DNR and that requires us for that permit to be needed. So for just a background on the timeline. We entered a contract with AE2S back in January. In March, we started developing the the model with the through Prairie Point with the tech grass. We met with the DNR. That's when we discovered that this model that's proposed to be the new flood plain, it isn't approved quite yet, but they're saying that we have to maintain that zero stage increase. So while AE2S was reviewing that model to to ensure that we did not have that stage increase. If we if we didn't find out that we weren't doing the stage increase, that would hold up the Prairie Point project, which was already about to start grading. So that was why there was this need to get this completed as quickly as possible. Yeah, the council had already approved Prairie Point and and the contractors are going to be out there in June moving dirt. So they had some, found some issues with the FEMA model with the inaccurate hydrology and hydraulics and
When you say they did.
Who's that?
AE2S.
Okay.
When they were looking at it. So we have a lot more cross sections, of course, than say FEMA. They're looking at it from very far away. We're looking at it much closer. So we're able to develop a model that's much more accurate. And we also found, well, they found issues with the the flows. We're toggling back and forth. Which, you know, going downstream, it should just increase in in volume as you go downstream and get larger, larger areas of ground bringing water into the into the creek. So we had a meeting and made to meet with DNR to discuss those inaccuracies, then they allowed us to. They were going to use our model for all these encroachments. So that gave us the the go ahead to continue on in June. We go to the next screen. So we we split into two projects. Again, this was because we wanted to get the portion along 83rd Street. The Culver Crossing there to ensure that the fill that they were doing along that area didn't increase the stage. If we could prove that, we wouldn't have to stop the developer. And that's what we did find out. And then now we're working on the final getting the permits for the eight, the 77th Marquette Crossing. That's upstream. As part of our project of cleaning the creek and making sure that the slopes are three to one. Right now they're undercut or one, you know, straight up and down, which causes issues with keeping the erosion down. And that's the biggest portion of this whole project, just to make those the creek more efficient and more stable. So we can go in there from time to time to clean it, but just so we got more flow that can get through there without eroding. So that that's where we're sitting. We're getting the permit for the two culverts and the crossing. And also for the creek cleaning. And that's all going to be happening here in probably January is when we're sending those in. I, the AE2S, Justin Claybo is here from AE2S to go over anything. There's a couple of slides in here that show those studies. This was the original scope. We had one model for the in one alternative and then one report. And that was to do the work within the creek for our cleaning. Then when we met with the DNR again, they expanded the scope. And it, we had three additional meetings with the DNR staff. And we had, they had to complete that new hydraulic study to show that there wasn't the stage increases at either of those two locations. And one of them had to be completed. We changed it into two reaches because we wanted to get that 83rd Street portion completed right away so that the developer could get going. And then you'll see on the next sheet, the two the model for 83rd. So this is prior to Prairie Point grading. And you can see everything on the west side as it is natural. And then when the development comes in and puts the storm ponds, the trails, and then the backyards of the houses, that's in the next slide. And you can see it really doesn't change the elevation of of the encroachment, which is that shaded kind of blue area on 100 year. And that's because those culverts are able to keep up with that flow. And that there is some overtopping on 100 year, which is to be anticipated. It's a significant rainfall event. And be about 320 feet with that. Largest depth being point seven feet. That would happen for probably an hour or two during the peak of the storm and then go away. But all of our roads, you know, these are interstates. City streets, we don't put in culverts that size. It gets to be very, very expensive to pass that water downstream that quickly. And so these are meant to overtop in those extreme events. And then that also keeps so that we know where that flood elevation where it overtops and as that even if we get say 500 year event, we still have a foot and a half of free board on top of that, we call free board, before it gets into the lowest opening of the homes. So we feel pretty safe that we're not going to flood homes by doing these analysis. And in 25 years, no brand new home that's come into the city of Atsigo has been flooded from overland flows. So that you can see the difference between the two. You can see where the development raised the grade into that red area. And it's still, we don't have any increase in stage. So that that was the the first reach and the second reach would be the the Marquette 77th Street Crossing. That one's not yet completed, but it's being worked on. Next screen. So then they put that, we had to send us to the DNR to get approval. And it that this report that AE2S put together, it shows the flows going through the two culverts underneath 83rd Street. And it shows the elevation before and after the fill of Prairie Point. As you can see, it 100 year water surface elevation pre-existing and post-development is 924.7. So we proved to the DNR that there was no stage increase on 100 year, 1% flood. Next screen. So now we're in, like I said, in the final stages, we're working on the 70th, 77th Marquette Crossing. Evaluating those culverts, we've got the two sizes. We're putting together the cross sections, sending those over to AE2S to run it through their evaluation and those. But right now should not show a stage increase on that one either. And we'll get approval for the cleaning of the creek and the placement of the culverts as part of that Atsigo Creek rehab within Prairie Point. Again, Justin Claybo is here from AE2S. If there's any questions that are more technical that are the stormwater model designers, so they would be able to help you with that.
Thank you. All right, council. Tom?
Madam Mayor, a question for AE2S.
Justin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Justin Claybo. I'm a water resource engineer and a project manager for AE2S and this Friday.
Thanks. The original contract that we had was a model for 18,500 and kind of one of our issues going back to our last meeting was an additional 18,500 for essentially having to do a new model. Kind of one of our questions was, was there not a lot of redundancy in doing that to where it shouldn't be the same cost? You know, the 18,500, you know, a lot of that should should be redundant, even though you are changing the model somewhat. So.
No, great question. So going into this year, how many times you do things? A lot of times we're doing engineering work, right? If you produce one plan set or you have one meeting, right? It's a single entity. But in our case, we had to produce two models, right? Two reports, multiple more meetings than what we were anticipating our scope of work. Now, if we we knew we would have to like evaluate, as Ron was saying about a FEMA model that was inaccurate and they request or not request required us to look at and assess the situation where we have an accurate model based on survey data from Marcus and Anderson, right? We have a lot more detailed information. We're able to produce a model from. Whereas FEMA, when they develop their models, you know, you look at the map behind your city, they're they're truly creating a model based on kind of a 10,000 foot view. And so when we come in and they say, hey, well, you have to permit through us as the permitting entity. You have to prove to us that your model is more accurate than ours. And so what that requires us to do is we understand our model through and through. But we don't know theirs because we have to then go through and dissect every little component of their model, which takes additional time. And that's and that's really the biggest thing for us. There are, yes, without a doubt, some efficiencies to reproduce things like, okay, I take the same report template and say, okay, here we go. But now I got to scrub this and I got to go back and make it for now the Marquette Crossing or I have to make it for the 83rd Crossing. So yes, there's things that we can reuse, but at the same point in time, you're basically producing two of the same product, just two different areas, basically.
And essentially, the the additional model that you're talking about that had to be recreated was their kind of, I'll say 30,000 foot
Yep.
Use of of things. We had a more accurate model and had they've accepted that model?
Correct. Yep. And so we, that's where, you know, you have to nudge them along, right? So they give you the model, you then we take it after a meeting and sit down and our engineers go through it and look at all the different components. And we summarize it, sit down with Ron and say, okay, here's all the findings that we have. Go back and then meet with the DNR, you know, present like this. Now, okay, here's the different things we saw. We collaborate and just making sure that they're comfortable with it, right? Then we ship it off to him again to actually review our model against theirs because Then we ship it off to him again to actually review our model against theirs because they actually. The D N R did produce the FEMA model. FEMA has their own hired contractors which produce this, not even within the state of Minnesota. So the D N R has basically handed this model saying, here you go. Here's what your new floodplain is going to look like, you know, run the nature, run the city meetings, you know, work with the local agencies. To get that pushed through or move forward. And so they haven't necessarily had their hands deep inside to understand the inner workings of it. They're trusting that FEMA is developing that model. I guess we'll say in concept with the standards that they develop again, but that's a really high level model, but whenever we get to. You know, doing developments and modeling, things like that, we're using the best information we have available, which is survey data. A lot more accurate hydraulics and hydrology information as well, so.
In, Ron, you were saying that. Is a female or D N R that still is working on. Producing a a new model. Or an approved model.
That's what.
Well, they they have it. They've had it for a while. It goes back to either two thousand eleven is when they first started. Showing us the new Atsego Creek. Preliminary, they call it FEMA flood. Most of the counties in the state have had their FEMA floodplanes approved. Wright County is one of the last. I don't know what the reason is before that and they don't anticipate it actually being approved till twenty twenty four. And I've had the Atsego portions of it, including the Mississippi River, the Crow. And Atsego Creek are the three. That have the new FEMA, well, they have a FEMA floodplain. Before it was just Mississippi River, the Crow River. Atsego Creek's a brand new FEMA floodplain. But I I've had all three of them since two thousand eleven, but they aren't accepting. I think they've had. Differences with other areas in the county or or just haven't gotten around to approving Wright Counties itself. But they're saying it's twenty twenty four, but I've heard it's been twenty twenty, twenty twenty two and now it's twenty twenty four.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's kind of like the wild scenic that we've had work with the with the D N R and multiple agencies and municipalities as far as.
Yeah, well, the these I've looked at to to make sure that all of the. Homes that we have developed over the years, especially on the west side on Atsego Creek area are not in the floodplain. If they were in the floodplain, you know, I was gonna, like I said before. The foot and a half freeboard that we've put in at every single crossing. Again, this is something that FEMA, you know, at thirty thousand feet doesn't know. But all of our crossings have this emergency overflow. So that before homes are inundated by the creek's floodwater. It goes over the low point in the road for, you know, a few hours at most during a hundred year event, but it doesn't. It has a foot and a half of freeboard, so they'd be a foot and a half deep running across the road. Before you would see it ever get into any homes within the city. And that's what our standard is and that's what we've required since development has started occurring in around nineteen ninety eight, two thousand. And again, so far, we've we've not had any. Homes that have flooded because of the creeks or the storm sewer system and that's just because. You know, that that extra. Safety factor of a foot and a half before any home would be, well, it gives us time if there is some blockage. To run out there, open up a culvert, open up a storm sewer, get that water flowing again.
Ron, since you said Wright County has not is one of the last counties then to get the FEMA.
And that's not, that's not Wright County's fault.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so and you said it's right, so it's not Wright County, it's FEMA not.
It's the D N R and FEMA.
The D N R, okay, but. Obviously, as you you said, you've been working with these numbers since two thousand eleven, things are in place. So when that comes to twenty twenty four, that obviously helps this north. East section of the county to be kind of already thought out and planned and inappropriate, correct?
Right.
Mayor. I'd also add, just based on the preliminary information we've seen regarding their review. Lot of areas that are currently considered floodplain will no longer be considered floodplain, so it's a much more accurate look at. Where the floodplain actually is and in many areas would benefit the city, so.
I was gonna say, when was, I mean, I know you go back to two thousand eleven, but when was the last floodplain for fifty?
It was in the sixties.
Sixties.
Yeah, so you know, they they sent out that the first FEMA. Report we've been using for years and years and years and of course now, computer modeling has gotten. You know, much more powerful. Much better since the sixties and yes, so you can much more accurately. Determine the flood elevation.
Yes.
Thanks. Clearly, this is important and clearly that this is something that we need to do. I think it was just, I think the concern from last meeting was just the. The delivery and maybe just the lack of information.
It was the double pay.
And that's why we had to, I mean, that's why essentially having this conversation now.
But I had, and and to Brittany's point, I I had my answers to questions too. But yeah, I I would second what Brittany was saying. Our issue was this double pan. We didn't really know what for.
And all we knew is that they were requesting something different, so it just was like, we already have the data, so explain to us what we're paying for. All right, any other questions? Yes, Tom.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one to the perpetual service agreement for stormwater hydraulic modeling of Atsego Creek with. Advanced Engineering and Environmental Studies LLC A two S in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred.
Second, motion by Tom, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion?
It's never there.
Yes.
And. Believe we knew this back in September, so if we get the the stuff in the future, just. Just like the city to be aware of it, or the council be aware of it a little sooner.
Agreed.
Any more comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six point one, the Facility Design Service Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. We're joined tonight by Jonathan Mose from Old Architects and Engineers. Your packet includes a memo outlining the information. There are two agreements. One is an owner and architect agreement, standard form. Has been reviewed by the city attorney and there is also a detailed proposal outlining the scope of work, which Jonathan will review with you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, thank you, Adam. Appreciate you. Meeting me at a formal council meeting. It seems like we've had a lot of work sessions leading up to this point. All good things before you tonight, of course, is our design services and it might look like. Really a big deal, but I will say that it's just sort of the next formal step in. The process that we've already been led to over the past, what, eighteen months or so? We've looked at, I think, our public works subcommittees looked at a number of different options of how to address some of the long term. Facility needs that Atsego is facing. And after a lot of hard work that they've put in, a lot of sort of. Soul searching about what makes the most sense long term. And great feedback from from council, I think, at a lot of our work sessions and everything too. We really found ourselves in a position where we think we have a clear picture of what those next steps are. And so really looking at constructing the new city hall. Doing a pretty major expansion and renovation of that public works facility. A few upgrades to this building and then constructing the cold storage facility out at the same public work site. Those compile like kind of the four main projects of this first phase. And so the reality is, I think every time we've had meetings, there have been more questions about, okay, well. What about this and what about that? And while we've been able to, I think, answer a lot of those questions. Really, this design is the next logical step in answering some of those things. You know, where exactly is City Hall gonna be located on the site that we've kind of agreed upon just to the north here? What is it gonna look like? You know, those kind of maybe more detailed questions really get answered in sort of that schematic design phase. For a lot of these different projects. We look to understand the real layout of a facility. We understand sort of some of the infrastructure that would go into it. And we start to answer questions that relate to maybe some of the other facilities that are surrounding those existing or new ones that we're going to be putting together. So that's kind of that early schematic design phase. When we get into design development, we really start to lock in on what the user feedback piece of this would be. And I think as a testament to sort of the process that we've gone through so far of. You know, not just us sort of walking off into a corner and doing our work and then coming back and saying, here you go, this is the answer. It's all about inclusion and so. We'll really spend a lot more time with, I think, a couple of different core planning groups that we'll get feedback from. We'll spend a lot of time with actual users and staff of these facilities to understand what their true needs are. We really have a solid basis going into this with the master plan, knowing the exact square footage. Some of the least basic details of the facility, but now we really get into the work of understanding. Sort of what exactly are each of these spaces gonna, how are they gonna actually help support? The individual staff throughout the city for all of these different buildings that we're gonna start to look at, so that's kind of that. Design development phase is really that user feedback piece of it. And then we get into construction documents and that's where I said it before, we kind of go back into the corner then a little bit. And we really put details into the drawing so that it's preparing them to be bid out by contractors, so we have to put in enough detail. To really understand what the building is gonna, you know, dimensions, the materials, or those kind of things get locked in on a set of documents that. Make more sense to a contractor than they make to many of us, so there's sort of. Along that way, those three different phases, so schematic design, design development, construction documents. There's check-ins with the council along the way. And so, you know, we look at the whole picture of our design services starting from schematic design and really it starts at this. You know, master planning phase that we started eighteen months ago, all the way out to people moving into this building and actually using it. Really, there's just sort of stages along the way where we're able to check in and and make sure that we're still following the path that was set out before us. And agreed upon with the subcommittee and with council as well. And so I think really we're excited to look at what the next phase of this is. But really feel like it's just a kind of a continuation of what we've already done leading up to this point. I didn't send Adam a real formal presentation. I think we've really gone over sort of the guiding principles and a lot of the details of this project. And now this is just sort of the formal check-in that you'll see along the way here of saying, okay. Wow, we think we know where we're at here and and this is the next logical step and so just looking for. That nod to continue forward here, I think. Pretty brief summary, I guess. I can definitely dig into some of the other. Sort of aspects of design or some of the other phases that and and what you might see is as council members. But I guess I'll just stop there and ask if there's any questions about that process.
Council?
Madam Mayor, not about the process.
This is very helpful, thank you. Yes.
Okay. So then I I I think it's just the, to answer the question, you know. The proposal that you have before you in in is intended to capture all four of those different real components. And as of right now, you know, we're really looking at sort of like a six to ten month design process. I think when I spoke to Adam about this, there's there's not interest in really dragging this out longer than we need to. You know, for every month we wait, wait right now in construction. We seem to continue to find more price increases on different materials and things like that and so. I think there's interest in making sure that we kind of continue forward with this process. At a steady clip, but not to the demise of the project, so I don't think, you know, oftentimes. We can do a lot of things very quickly, but we're always looking for feedback and to continue that sort of collaboration with the city. And so as insofar as we can get decisions made from the city and get feedback from staff. I think we'll intentionally kind of move this thing along to make sure that we're not waiting too long on that construction market and trying to take advantage of. Time, which is our sort of enemy right now, unfortunately.
Any other questions with Jonathan?
Madam Mayor, maybe not a question specifically for Jonathan, but Jonathan and our attorney. I know in the packet said that you're gonna have a chance to review this. Have you reviewed it?
Mayor, Members Council, I have reviewed it. I sent in some proposed revisions and I accepted those.
So Madam Mayor, and I don't know if if Jonathan or Dave can answer this, but. In section, Article eleven, under compensation, says commissioning by separate contract. Is there? Another contract? Is that the amendment or or exhibit A or?
I I can explain that if it's specifically about commissioning, is that the the question?
Yeah, where it has kind of an asterisk and says commissioning by separate contract.
Yeah, so the commissioning process is really another consultant that the city. We would recommend you pursue finding a consultant for the commissioning process. And really what that stands to provide for you is an outside sort of engineering consultant. That would ensure the operation of the facility after it opens up, so. You know, we're going through and doing our sort of punch list and making sure that it's built and it's providing the, you know, materials that are in the specifications. But certain buildings by statute from the state require commissioning, but we always recommend going through this process anyway. And really what it, what it does is go through that building automation system, so sort of like the temperature control system of a building. And have somebody really put it through the paces to make sure that not only is the stat on the wall where we showed it and the wire connected the way we asked them to. But this is a separate, more intensive process to have somebody go through and really make sure that. When you push buttons or tell it to do something, it actually goes through the whole process to control the building the way it's intended to, so. I I think we always recommend that it be an additional service that the city would consider hiring. But there's some intentionality behind making it a third party is that not only is it. They're looking at sort of the contractors work, they're actually somewhat scrutinizing our work too, so that you're insured that. We're not sort of, you know. You just have that third party view of it, not somebody that actually did the design as sort of locked in and how we kind of anticipated it would work, so.
In in that commissioning, it would be a contract between then the sitter, the city, or in this case, what's described to as the owner. And a third party, not old.
Yep.
You know, third party.
Yeah, and it's not dissimilar from, you know, you would you would hire a surveyor directly to survey your property, you know, that would be outside of our purview. So that sort of process, we would say, is a part of the project's soft costs, which I think we've talked about in the past, so.
And the other question I had is when you get into kind of eleven point two, eleven point three, it says hourly rate or fixed fee as agreed upon in writing. So is is that something? That takes place later, is that where it says employer category rate zero?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have the. The thing, the contract in front of me, but the the fixed B is what's outlined in exhibit A.
Okay.
So, you know, it it's just for specific items that might go beyond scope of what we're talking about. Where you might look at the hourly rate, but generally speaking, what we're doing, you know, this is sort of just standard A I E contract language. Really, the the meat of what we're gonna do and and how we're gonna charge for that is in that exhibit, so it's outlined in that fixed fee and. We're kind of saying it's fixed and unless we dramatically change the scope. We're really saying this is it and we're gonna walk away and not talk about it again, and I think that that's. Probably similar to what you've seen in the master planning processes. And I think that that's uh probably similar to what you've seen in the master planning process is that, you know, we were here maybe eighteen months ago. Um, you know, we went through the interview process and we presented our fees for that. And we really didn't talk about it again. It was just the past. And so I think that's kind of our same process that we like to follow with uh design as well.
Okay, and so that I think answers my question. So it's not gonna be based essentially on the hourly rate, it's a fixed fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um and then uh one of my other questions is when you get over to eleven point eight one, uh item number eleven, it has uh in bold expense of computer-aided design and drafting equipment time when used in connection with project. Um and this is under essentially compensation for reimbursable expenses. Could you explain that?
Yeah, it's basically um, I think the best way I can explain it is it's like the software licensing that we have to buy for our um, you know, three D modeling software is that we have just regular um licensing and software updates that we have to do to that equipment. And this is just one way that it helps us supplement those costs is to provide it as a reimbursable cost to our owner. So we've had clients negotiate that in the past. Um but, you know, usually it's just sort of a small percentage of the overall fee, but it just gets charged as reimbursable.
Would we find with taking that out?
I, yeah.
Oh, I mean, I I I like when I get a Microsoft Word, you know, I have to buy multiple licenses for different computers where I can get a bundle or three for.
Yep.
Whatever, and it's like, well, that's just kind of part of business.
Yeah, and and again, I think, you know, our our kind of overhead profit on the percentage that we have in place might look differently if we didn't have that software license as sort of reimbursable cost.
Yeah.
So to negotiate it out means that we're being compensated somewhat less on on that specific project or with this client as opposed to some others that have agreed to it. Um so I I'm not gonna, you know, split hairs about it. Um but again, it's just sort of part of how we've sort of gone forward with our fixed fees and our clients in the past. So I think it's something we continue to probably discuss and and determine the best way forward.
Well, I'm just saying if we are going to make a motion here tonight to approve uh it to accept the the proposal, would you be willing to have that out if we would make that motion?
Sure. If you're gonna call me to the carpet, I'll say, yes, sure.
Madam Mayor. So this expense here for the computer-aided design and drafting.
Yeah, no, all so all of the soft costs and the project costs that we've presented so far um would cover everything that we've talked about thus far. Not just our um percentage-based fee, but the reimbursables portion of that as well. It's all in that number. It's not in addition to the project costs that have been um discussed.
All right, any other questions? For a motion?
I'm there.
Tom?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Atsigo and Old Architects and Engineers and to accept the proposal to perform full architectural and engineering consulting services, especially with the contract uh that uh is attached and with the just everyone's eleven point eight one point one one being excluded.
Second.
Great. Motion by Tom, seconded by Jeff. Audrey, you got that change? Right. Is there any discussion? Tom?
Madam Mayor, uh Adam, this comes out of the Fund Four fourteen revolving capital improvements. That is accurate.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Yeah, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
And a journey.
Yeah. Item six point two, Emergency Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh so this project has been going on for about the past eighteen months reviewing our emergency services and emergency management evaluation. Um but obviously, the project has been going on longer than that, but that's just kind of the extent that I've been um involved in. So after the November twenty first uh council meeting, the council gave direction to create the Emergency Services Director job description. Um and so staff has been working hard of kind of working with our consultants as well as kind of reaching out to various um other cities to come together with a job description to present to council for considerable approval. Um so some of the major job responsibilities um for this position would be to oversee the Emergency Services Department as directed and voted on in the November twenty first meeting. Um so they would oversee the fire and EMS for emergency services um and then as well as the Emergency Services Regulatory Board, which is um that ambulance kind of contract oversight um at the state level. Uh part of that also would be the emergency operations and management. Uh so that would be including city staff training for the annual training that staff um needs as well as continuous training for council as well. Uh part of their role would also include the Public Information Officer for the city, specifically in um emergency search situations. Um and then with that, also contract coordination for the Wright County Sheriff's uh office as well as the various fire departments that the city contracts with. Um and then as noted from our uh admin subcommittee, also making sure the inclusion of the Public Safety Commission liaison. Uh this was also reviewed at the December seventh Administrative Subcommittee. Um and so this should include all the comments that were made from that meeting as well. Uh moving forward, obviously, this is presented for consideration for council to approve. Um if council was to move forward, future action center uh at the January ninth meeting, staff would bring forward a recruitment schedule um and process as well as a position profile that we've been kind of using for. Uh most of our department have level positions, we've been creating a position profile to be posted. Uh so that's our layout for what we have so far, if there's any questions.
Um at our admin meeting, we talked about um the schedule and then interview process. And we both had said that you guys were gonna think a little bit about that. So has anything, are you guys waiting till January to kind of bring that forward or?
Uh Mayor, yes, uh that's kind of after we discussed. Um we are hoping to do a little bit more research before we came up with a final plan to give the council. Um we just want to make sure that it's gonna be effective and efficient in how we're doing it. So uh we hope to come back with January ninth with a little bit more of a solid plan that we'll be able to move forward with from there.
And this is in regards to my questioning is in regards to kind of the panel and groups or groups of panels that there would be to uh be interviewing these potential applicants for this position. All right, questions for Sabrina on this?
Uh Ben Mayor, did our professional let be there review this?
Jerry?
Yeah, Jerry. Name is Steve.
Yeah, Mayor, uh yes, uh Jerry Strick did help uh create this job description. So he helped quite a bit with uh gathering information as well as going through a review with staff. So um he was very helpful and gave a lot of good feedback.
And as she said, we did review it at the end of the meeting last week, so.
Were there any changes?
Um I asked that they um this person be included as a attend the Public Safety Commission. I thought that um, you know, it's a really great opportunity to hear what's happening for our residents. And then if there is the follow-through pieces that um it can be addressed right away versus waiting for minutes that come.
It seems like every time that you're talking about the Public uh Safety Commission, there's always some people that show up and don't show up. And it's would be nice to have that uh in there. Yes.
Yes, continuity for that. Maybe we'll have more attendance from various partners at this time. All right, any other questions or comments? Why is a motion would be in order? Yes, Brittany.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Sabrina. All right, moving on to item six point three. This is our twenty twenty-three budget and property tax levy. Adam, I will turn this over to you for the truth and taxation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Start off with the truth and taxation presentation uh portion of the meeting. Uh before we get started, uh this meeting is not for the purpose of uh questioning valuations. Uh the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization takes place between April and May uh of each year. Uh for payable twenty twenty-three, those meetings occurred on April twenty-fifth and May ninety. Uh truth and taxation is required uh by the Minnesota Department of Revenue for any city with a population in excess of five hundred. Uh notification for these meetings uh is done by Wright County. They send a partial specific notice to every property uh within the city between November eleventh and twenty-fourth. And the purpose is for discussion of the budget, uh property tax levy, and capital improvement plan, and also to provide and have new public input into the process. Uh this is Atsigo's strategic vision, uh first formulated in two thousand eighteen uh and modified uh on a biannual basis. Uh this uh plays a key role uh in budget development and council uh review processes. Uh the budget process for twenty twenty-three uh began with the city council outlining goals and objectives. Uh staff then took that feedback and prepared proposed budgets for twenty twenty-three. Uh those budgets are reviewed by the city council uh in open public meetings. Uh the preliminary tax levy was adopted on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two by resolution. Uh prior to this evening, there have been a total of ten budget meetings uh for all of that review to take place. And then the final budget adoption uh pending council consideration this evening. I'll start with the general fund, uh some summary information here. Uh the general fund does have a balanced budget of seven million nine hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars uh per capita increase of seven dollars uh year over year. Uh the chart below shows that property taxes are the leading revenue source uh for this fund, and they account for about sixty-seven uh percent of the total revenues in the general fund. The next largest batch of revenue comes from license and permits, mostly new construction uh builds, but there are also many other permits that are uh reviewed for basement finishes, uh deck additions, roofing, windows, siding, et cetera. As I mentioned, the balanced budget there, uh this chart is showing uh the changes in each of the major functions of the general fund. So the general fund serves as the primary operating fund of the city and accounts for all revenues and expenditures that are not accounted for elsewhere. Uh within the general government function, uh there are many departments, including city council, administration, finance, IT, uh elections, et cetera. Uh the budget increased uh in this function group uh at twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Some of the notable changes include employee wage and benefits. Uh a non-election year is actually a deduction uh in the budget expenses. The contract with the Wright County Assessor increased by sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. IT, software, hardware, and cyber uh insurance coverage increases of eleven thousand seven eighty-six and a classification and compensation study of seventy-five hundred. All other line items within these department budgets accounted for a decrease of twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. The public safety function includes police protection, uh the Public Safety Commission, fire protection, building safety, emergency management, and animal control. The increase uh for this group of departments was three hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars uh compared to twenty twenty-two. Some of the notable changes include employee wages and benefits, uh law enforcement contract with Wright County Sheriff. Uh this contract did account for an increase in daily service hours. Uh the city will be at a level of fifty hours per day uh for twenty twenty-three. Fire and emergency response contracts with the cities of Elk River, Albert Villan Rogers accounted for an increase of a hundred and twelve thousand. The Emergency Services Director position uh previously approved this evening, a budget impact of one hundred and three thousand and building official inspections contract for forty-seven thousand. All other line items accounted for eleven thousand dollars of increase. Public works include street maintenance, engineering, streetlights, and fleet management, a total increase of one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, employee wage and benefit changes of eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh the addition of a second fleet mechanic position in October of twenty twenty-three will be twenty-one thousand. Uh salt, sand, and gravel at just over five thousand. Streetlight electricity at ten thousand two hundred. Uh fuel is a major driver in the budget increase of these departments with the cost increases at thirty-six thousand. And then vehicle and equipment maintenance supplies and contracted major vehicle and equipment supplies uh or repairs, excuse me, accounted for twenty-four thousand. All other line items within these department budgets at two thousand one fifty. Culture and Recreation includes park maintenance, recreation programming, parking rec commission, and the HPC. A total increase in these departments of seventy-nine thousand with notable changes, including staff uh wages and benefits, uh the addition of a park maintenance one position, uh liability and property insurance, actually a decrease of twenty-six thousand, park maintenance materials and supplies at four thousand, electric and water utilities at five thousand, and recreation program instructors and facilities at eleven thousand. All other line items accounted for seventy-three hundred. Economic Development includes planning, the Planning Commission, and the Economic Development Department, uh a decrease of forty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty across these departments. Uh the notable change there is the comprehensive plan update was scheduled uh and mostly completed in twenty twenty-two. Uh there will be a meeting or two yet in the new year to get that fully adopted. Uh moving on to the property tax levy, uh the bar chart indicates four different functions of the levy, uh one being the general revenue uh to pay for the expenditures of the general fund, capital reserves, debt service, and tax abatements. On the bottom, you can see a per capita uh indicator uh in the levy over the last five years. This chart breaks down the levy by purpose, uh including general government, streets and lights, police and fire, debt service, capital improvements, parks and recreation, and economic development. Tax capacity factors, uh this is set by the Wright County Assessor. I previously mentioned the Board of Appeal and Equalization dates uh held earlier this year. Uh the current environment for market values has an increasing trend. Residential property in the city increased nearly nineteen percent year over year. Uh the median value home within the city increased over thirteen percent. Uh commercial industrial, almost sixteen percent, and agricultural at just over four percent. Uh the charts here indicate the changes in tax capacity over the last five-year period uh with the residential growth throughout the community. Uh it's no surprise to see uh those bars rising quicker than any other. Uh the commercial industrial uh is the second highest portion of the city's tax base, and you see that portion increasing over the last five years. Uh important to monitor how the city compares itself to our neighboring communities. Uh the twenty twenty-three tax rates on the preliminary tax notifications, uh those property tax rates are indicated in the chart. those property tax rates are indicated in the chart above with Atsigo being the third lowest among the peer communities that we look at. And then the chart on the bottom indicates the total tax rate for each of the three school districts within the community. A calculation of the median value home within the city of Atsigo, on the very top row, you can see the appraised value increased thirteen percent for this property. In the middle section, you are shown the tax rates, which decreased a total of just under fifteen percent across the board. And then at the very bottom, the estimated taxes for a median value home. Notable there that the city of Atsigo taxes, despite a thirteen percent increase in that median value, is actually going down twenty dollars. The pie chart on the right indicates that of a median value home within the city, twenty-five percent of the total tax bill for that property goes to the city with the remainder going to the school district and Wright County. The capital improvement plan covers a ten-year period. Just because an item is included within the capital improvement plan does not mean that the city is necessarily moving forward to that. It rather gives staff direction to proceed in the planning process. And then a snapshot of some of twenty twenty-three projects, pavement management, two point two seven million, parks and trails, two point seven million, vehicles and equipment at five hundred thousand, the water utility fund at over five million, sanitary sewer fund at over twenty-two million with the expansion of the West wastewater treatment facility driving that cost, and then city billions at one point three million. Some of the additional funds that the council reviewed as part of the budget process include the public utility funds. This is the water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater funds. A summarized budget is presented here for illustration. The debt service funds, there are two outstanding liabilities that the city led these property taxes and special assessments for the repayment of those. Those budgets have been reviewed as part of this process. And then lastly, special revenue funds. There are three tax increment financing district throughout the city of Atsigo to incentivize economic development. The tax increments generated from those properties, go ahead and pay those development costs that were incurred. Just outlining again, the city council action tonight is to consider adoption of the budget, the property tax levy, and the cap home improvement plan. Within your packet, there were three separate resolutions, each with supporting documentation. The council should seek counsel or public input on this process, and then consider the items for approval.
Thank you, Adam. All right. At this time, we will open the public comment portion of this section. This is where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and ask questions to council or to staff. Is there any comments? I'll ask again for public input, comments. All right, we will close the public input and bring it back up to council for questions or motions.
Madam Mayor, Adam, when you're looking at the tax capacity and the residential value that that makes up, you had a bar graph up there.
Yeah, I can bring that back up there.
So when you see that increase, obviously, part of it was the market that was running.
Sorry.
You, you had it.
I know.
There you go. When we're looking at that increase, part of that was obviously the market, which the county, when we deal with the the truth and the Board of Appeals and Equalization, we get those numbers, and that's always reflecting the market, you know, essentially a year plus a year and two ago. And so as we kind of move forward, that would slow down, would be my guess, but also in that is new construction.
Correct.
And so when you're looking at, you know, the number of houses that were built over the past year or two, and you see our budget increased by seven percent, most of that is kind of being eaten up by some of that new growth, and especially the commercial and industrial growth that we're also seeing in those new businesses that are coming into play.
That's fair. If you look at the bar chart on the left, you'll see what you would normally see in a less aggressive market value increase environment. It's more reflective of the new construction coming into the community where you see that brown line for twenty twenty-three. That's a combination of new growth and the aggressive market value increases.
And so kind of a question I get a lot from a lot of people in the public is, you know, they see their estimated market value that's gone up fifteen, twenty percent, and they think their city portion of property taxes is going to go up fifteen, twenty percent, and that's not necessarily the case. And so when you look at the medium home, and you see that the medium home will actually should decrease.
Yeah, and the illustration here, you know, even with an increase of thirteen percent on the median value, the city taxes portion is going down. Now, this calculation is independent and different for every single property in the community, but this is an illustration of even with that increase in market value, the city taxes are decreasing in this specific instance.
And then also, when you look at the increase in our budget, two of the numbers that really kind of pop out to me are also the public safety and public works, the roads that we've built in order to encourage that growth, which is help maintain that tax capacity and keep people's property taxes lower. We're paying for roads that were built ten, fifteen years ago and maintaining roads that were built this year and last year. So that's obviously going to be increasing. When we look at the public safety, the public safety portion of the budget increased, what, twelve, thirteen percent?
Yeah, with our calculator in front of me, it looks like just a shade over ten, eleven percent.
And a big portion of that was the fire, which the fire contracts.
Correct, the three fire contracts increased one hundred and twelve thousand dollars total.
And then our law enforcement contract of one hundred and eighty.
Yep.
And that law enforcement contracting includes the additional two hours of service that
Yeah, roughly sixty percent of that increase is for the increased service level.
Any other questions on that, Tom? Also, questions or emotion? Tom?
Madam Mayor, if there is no other comments or questions, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two ninety-eight, adopting the twenty twenty-three annual operating budgets. I do have a point order. Can I make all motions, Adam, at once, or do I need to make them separately?
If you are wishing to modify the motion included in the packet, you can make them separate. But if you are going by the recommended staff motion, then you can make it all together.
And in continuation of my motion, also to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two ninety-nine, setting a final property tax levy for taxes payable twenty twenty-three, and to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one hundred, adopting the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-two capital improvement plan.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? Tom?
Madam Mayor, and you know off the top of your head, how many meetings we had regarding this? Tonight would be the eleven.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Madam Mayor, I, I note this is the shortest of the eleven meetings. Yes.
You are correct.
I love shot.
All right, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's okay. All right, next item is city council reports and updates. Our first item, I wasn't going to go down, we're going to stay here, Tom. It's a special recognition for council member Tom Darkmold. Tonight will be Tom's last meeting. This is in recognition of your dedicated service to the residents of Atsigo. We're serving on the planning commission from two thousand four to two thousand six, and city council from two thousand seven to twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
So we, I think we have some people in the audience, but also council and staff, if there are any comments for council member Darkmold that you would like to pass on. Jeff?
Madam Mayor, I can say a few words about council member Darkmold. Tom, thank you for all your time in the city of Atsigo. As a citizen of Atsigo, thank you very much for your four terms. You've done a fantastic job. As a newly elected from two years ago, I'd like to thank for the, being a part of the the public work subcommittee for your tutelage, your patience for me to learn, or from learning and helping me out. Thank you very much for that. Also, for helping me with the last two years with city council. Thank you very much for your wisdom and patience on that. And again, thank you for your time served as also a colleague of yours and also a citizen. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Jeff.
Yes. Tom often says that, so for the audience.
Thank you.
If you don't have any questions, okay?
I don't, I don't think it's goodbye, but now, Tom, you've been a great council member, very supportive of staff. I think you went about your role in the right way. Your, your focus on the financials, given my role as the finance director also was very appreciative and challenging over the years, but I think we've, we've put the city in a very good financial position and as long as you've been serving the community, I think that's very impressive. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you also, and it's been nice working with you these last two years. Staff on the sec.
Tom, it was fun working with you, and I appreciate your expertise development and domain issues, and I wish you the best in the future.
Thank you.
Mayor, so I'm surprised you're not wearing a three-piece suit.
I know. We thought that in flip flops.
I did that last time.
You know, as I was thinking about the meeting tonight, I realized that you and I have come full circle. I was disappointed when they appointed you to the planning commission, and I'm disappointed now that you're leaving. Been an exceptional council member. The experience you bring in terms of business and development has aided both the city council, the planning commission, and the staff to a great degree. Your representation of the city on transportation issues at state, national, and local level. No one is more responsible for the improvement that happened on Trunk Highway one oh one with you and your role with your family prior to becoming a council member. It's a legacy that will stand for a long time. So as Adam said, hopefully this isn't goodbye. Hopefully, we see you in that development role on the other side, because we know that your family has lots of land holdings that would be wasted as a winery. So we're, we're happy to see you move something forward in terms of benefiting the community and seeing it grow. And obviously, the other perspective that you brought that was so important to the city was as a lifelong resident. It's something unique amongst the council members, and especially in a growing community like this. You've seen where Atsigo was, where it's gotten to, and, you know, really helped lay the future, where to go in the future. So thank you, and I more than enjoyed working with you, and again, disappointed to see you leave.
I aim to disappoint you, Dan. Guess that's a good thing.
Just don't subpoena me again in the future.
Mayor, I guess my, my first individual contact with, with Tom was as a resident when his grandfather had decided to do some walleye raring ponds on the property and reroute the stream, and I was a little apprehensive going out and visiting with Tom, not necessarily knowing what his response would be, but I found him to be respectful, even keel on his attitude, thoughtful, and you know, I think he, I knew at that point he'd be a great council member when he was elected, and he showed that through the years. I appreciate all your support over those years. Appreciate it.
All right, it's my turn. I didn't want to write emails, because I really will be super sad to see you leave. You've sat on the side of me for many years. I've learned a lot from you. I hope you've learned a lot from me. And it was already mentioned that you being a lifelong resident, I always looked to that as the ground, like it helped to always make me look to decisions that we can't make, rash decisions that we always have to look at it. You know, we're just here for a short time here on earth, and so making the best decisions that we can for the residents that lived here before us that are current and in the future. You always run an even-ke temperament. I will miss your outfits. I always wondered what you might wear, if you got them from your grandpa. It was a little joke, but, but again, and then flip flops, you always coordinate three-piece suits with flip flops. I've never met anyone else that could do that, but you could pull it off, so I, I will miss you. Again, I don't think it's goodbye. As a resident, you bring so much to the table in development. Growing up here, we hope to see you around, and, and as it won't be goodbye, we'll just be here in a different different role. So again, thank you for your time and dedication to the residents of Atsigo. You will be greatly missed. And I will put it out to the audience, it looks like Jason's already standing up there, but to any residents that might have any comments in the audience or online. It looks like Jason is, is here to make his staff comment.
I get to go twofold, because from a professional standpoint, you've always supported me in what I'm trying to accomplish here. And I really do appreciate being able to work with you in that aspect, and you've always had a courtesy to explore my passion with everything, and we've been able to work really well in that. And then when I say the twofold, as a citizen of Atsigo, I've really appreciated your, your approach to accountability on everything. And I really feel like the decisions that you've made and being able to sit in the audience and see it from a different aspect, that I, I really do feel like you're going to have a legacy impact on some of the decisions and the questions you've asked and some of the decisions you've made over the years. So I just thank you for both sides, but appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, Dave. Dave Thompson, eighty-three, ninety-three, Ochoa Cart. I didn't realize how long we'd worked together, Tom. Must be like sixteen, seventeen years when I was on the planning commission and you were, and then you're on the council and you're the liaison to our meetings. I want to thank you for all the support. I really appreciated the opportunity to work with you and what you've done for our city. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Dave. So I got to learn a lot from Dave too on planning mission when I first got on.
Is there any other comments? Otherwise, Tom, do you have any comments?
No, I'm, I'm not going to make any comments right now, but I will, I will later. It's It's, I'll just say that I've always tried to do my best and always try to put the city and the residents first.
I would agree. All right, we saw our undercity council reports and updates. Does anyone else have anything? Yes. Are you working for them now or? Sabrina accompanied me last week at the Wright County Mayors Association meeting, so we were, there's a few mayors in the county that we're not seeking reelection. And that we also got to meet our new. Wright County officials, two of them, two of the three we got to meet that were present that evening. So it was a nice event. And also an update was we had the sanity event on Saturday over at the Public Works Garage. Great feedback, well attended and kudos to the Parkerneck staff for continuing to make it a bigger and better event. So please pass that on to them. Does anyone else have anything? Then we will move on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess we'll be back in January to hopefully have some updates on our emergency services director position. And we have. All right, I'm still. Thank you, Tom, for all your service. Sorry to say.
Adam?
One save the date, Mayor and Council, the I ninety-four corridor coalition is posting their legislative preview breakfast on January sixth. And we'll send out more details via email for that. And one sort of discussion item, would the council give any consideration to waiving penalties on delinquent utility bills this month? Given the disruption in mail delivery. So I wanted to, given that there are no additional meetings, billings will go out end of this week or early next week. Wanted to open that up for discussion.
I, I think I would support that. Again, we have people that haven't had mail for a few weeks. That's out of our control. But I would not want to see them get a fee because they didn't get their bill in, in time they turn it.
Or even if they did, in whether to get it back to the.
Whether we get it back, both ways.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I, I saw that too. I was talking to a few businesses out there that had also mailed their bills. And, and they got late charges from other third parties and like we mailed this thirteen days ago. So I agree.
And it's not just Elk River Post Office that we're hearing, it's the other ones too that are being affected, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been disruptive even at City Hall. We're driving our mail to, to post offices to make sure that it gets picked up on a routine basis. If the council were willing to do that, a motion would be recommended by staff.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
I'll make motion to waive the late fees for utility billing for this month.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let you know that the Advisory Commission openings have been posted on the website. And it'll be in the upcoming newspaper and if anybody wants to apply, let us know.
Great, thank you. Dave?
Nothing else, thanks, Mayor.
Mayor?
Mayor, the Planning Commission won't be meeting again yet this year, but their first meeting next year will include. A mixed-use commercial development east of Highway one oh one as well as a small retail building east of Highway one oh one. That's in addition to a couple of other commercial projects that are in discussions with city staff. So building on the momentum that it started at the end of this year, most recently with the Aldi approved at tonight's meeting. So definitely a positive start for commercial development next year.
Thank you. Ron?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Jason?
I don't have anything super specific. Just want to say a public thank you to one of our investigators in the Special Investigations Unit who's been doing a phenomenal job handling some problem issues in the city of Atsigo. So thank you to him. I'm going to leave him unnamed, but he knows who he is. Of that, if I have anything specific, I will relinquish my time unless there's any questions.
Does anyone have anything for Jason? All right, thank you. All right, does anyone else have anything? Otherwise, this is our last meeting, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Tom, again.
All right, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
Going to miss you doing that every time.
I know.
We always wait for you to do it.
Is there any, is there, is there more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending. We also have some little treats over there, Tom. Those are, you always say you always just ate, but there's some treats over there on the left. And one of them, please don't, there's one that's different. Please don't take that one. For Tom, so hopefully, so please, please don't take that one, but take a treat on your way out or stay and we'll, we'll visit a little bit. But again, thank you for attending everyone this evening and happy holidays.